All right, welcome everyone. This is our regular Board of Commissioners meeting, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. The years is flying by. So this meeting is now called to order. So if you would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for just a brief moment of silence.
Allegious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unundergod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, thank you. You can be seated. All right, do we have any changes requested for tonight's agenda? Town manager?
Mayor, thank you. I have a few requests for the agenda. Add G-two state budget update, add J-four temporary easement agreement between Town of Waxaw and Great Wagon Road Distillery, and remove F-two, the Engineering Department five-year service award.
All right, obviously some discussion on some of that. So any questions on that? Have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda as amended.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Well, remind me to stop on those points. So consent agenda, can I have a motion on that, please? And I'll take that back. No general public comment tonight because that was a zero. So nothing there. Now I'll move to the agenda, the consent agenda. Can I have a motion on that, please?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Very good. Motion's up. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. unanimous. All right, we jump down to recognitions right out of the gate. The first one, Melody and Susan, welcome up.
Hello. All right, so it's an honor to recognize Susan Lee, Administrative Assistant, for reaching the milestone of five years of service to the town. During this time, Susan has consistently recognized or been recognized by her peers for the outstanding level of professionalism that she brings to the table. She wears many hats from assisting the mayor and keeping him on track to assisting the administrative team with grants, Waxaw One-on-One, and the list goes on and on. So when you come to Town Hall, the first, one of the first people that you see is Susan. She's one of the ones that provides that critical role of providing customer service to our visitors. Susan's primary focus is supporting the team and accomplishing their goals, and she isn't interested in the limelight. Well, you got it tonight. Susan creates positive interpersonal relationships by being courteous and thoughtful in her interactions with others. When assigned a task, Susan accepts it with enthusiasm and goes the extra mile to ensure it is completed with excellence. She honors her commitments and holds herself accountable for her actions and while learning from those challenges. So working with Susan over the last couple of years has been a sincere pleasure, and I look forward to many more. Thank you, Susan, for all your contributions to the town. You are an invaluable team member. You are greatly appreciated.
All right. Go ahead, get up there.
She didn't tell me I had to do this.
Part of the surprises.
I just want to say thank you to everyone. This Commissioner Simpson said to me the other day that it seems like it should be longer than five years. And I said, yeah, some days it feels like that. But I meant it positively because this has just been such a perfect fit. It's hard to remember what I did previously, and I appreciate each and every one of you. This is a wonderful, been a wonderful experience from the get-go, and I wouldn't change a thing. So thank you all very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Been a great team effort, and I will say from me personally, thank you for helping keep me on track as my cohort over here mentioned that it's a big job to keep me on track. I get a lot of emails, a lot of calls, and she actually fields them all, so it can free up my time to do some bigger things. So I appreciate that a lot. Thank you for the support. All right, so we're going to go to Waxaw Police Department recognitions. Chief, you're up. We have Jeremy Ferguson.
Good evening. Tonight, we have Jeremy Ferguson. He's a newly promoted detective with the Waxaw Police Department. He started his career at Mecklenburg County Sheriff's Office. He stayed there for five and a half years. He was a lateral transfer coming to us. Very fortunate to get him seven years ago. So during that seven years, he worked patrol for most of that time, which we really noticed his, his skills in criminal investigations and what he did for Lowe's, Walgreens, CVS, every store in town that had larcenies, he was quick to jump on those and clear those cases. So we promoted him to detective. Tonight, we're here with his, he's achieved his intermediate certificate for law enforcement, and we're recognizing him for that accomplishment tonight.
Outstanding. Seven years already. You can have the mic if you'd like. If you'd like to say something, get close to the mic there. I know you can talk.
I can't. I can't. I just want to say thank y'all for this. It wouldn't be possible without the great leadership that we have both within the police department with the town, and that's recently really come to light how great our leadership is within this town. So I appreciate and applaud everyone. Y'all for what you do, chief, assistant chief, what y'all do. It doesn't go unrecognized.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate you having our back, literally. That's photo op time. All right, so next up. You want to stay up there forever?
No, so I'm going to introduce Ricky Tarleton.
Okay.
He's with American Legion Twenty-seven out of Monroe. He's going to be presenting a plaque to Waxaw Police Department tonight.
Great. Welcome, Ricky. Appreciate being here.
While breaking per cuff, I put my official uniform hat on.
You may.
Right. Waxaw Police, I'll go ahead and do my speech first, and I'll present them. Is that all right?
Absolutely.
April twenty-ninth, we had our State Legacy Ride all the way from Kings Mountain. We was tasked to bring them from Kings Mountain through here from Raceway Forty-five to Monroe, Waxaw, Monroe, Rockingham, back to Greensboro. These guys right here got us safely in and out of town in a two-week short notice because this was thrown on us short notice in April. But that tells you professionalism, patriotism, Americanism. That's what we're all about as legionnaires. Short notice stepping up and doing the job and called upon. And I couldn't ask for any better help from anybody. And I'm going to read these plaques and present it to Lieutenant and Officer Donnie Gay, and under a couple of missing chiefs, but let them know that anytime y'all need us, you know, Monroe's Legion will help you. Waxaw's got a legion that can help you. We're here. That's what we're all about.
First, I got a, let me give you this plaque right here first.
If you can see this, we'll get a picture of it. We got this plaque right here and everything. And it says, Waxaw Police Department, thank you for escorting our riders during the North Carolina State Legacy Ride, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Chapter Twenty-seven Legion Riders, Monroe, NC. And this is from all the way from our national leadership down to local, okay? We had national leadership with us. Safety and protection is what they provided for us. And I got another certificate from us that reads, a certificate of appreciation. I'm going to give it to them, and I'll read it. It says, "This certificate of appreciation is gratefully presented to Waxaw Police Department in recognition and sincere appreciation of outstanding service and assistance to the American Legion Riders, which contributed to the advancement of the American Legion programs and activities dedicated to God and country. Presented by Chapter Twenty-seven Monroe, North Carolina, American Legion Riders, Department of North Carolina, this day, twenty-sixth of September, two thousand and twenty-three. I test Ricky W. Tarleton, Chapter Twenty-seven Riders Director." Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Congratulations, guys. And yes, they can pivot and scramble when necessary. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. You want to get a picture of them first? Okay, very good. All right, Parks and Rec is up. We've got, looks like a new member. So Andrew.
Evening, all. Thank you.
Looks like we have more than one.
Yep, more than one.
All right, we'll combine them.
So tonight I have the privilege to introduce two of our new members for Park and Rec. We have Ryan Ridgeway and Jordan Coon. Ryan, we've taken him from Stallings, Parks and Rec, so he's come on over to us. And Jordan, he's fresh from New York, so he's a new hire here with us as well. So we look forward to many, many good things from them and good years from them.
Guys, have any? You're really going to break them in.
I just want to say it's a pleasure to be working for the Town of Waxaw. These two and a half weeks have been awesome. Everybody, I'm in the department and all the other town staff that I've met so far has been just really nice and personable, and I just really appreciate that and look forward to doing great for the community and the department and the town.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you all.
All right, guys, welcome to the town. All right, thank you, guys, and again, welcome. All right, next up, presentations. We have Rotary Art Competition. So we have Rotary's Assistant Governor for Rotary District Seventy-six eighty, Marcus Watson. Marcus, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the Commissioners. Welcome, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Marcus Watson. I'm a resident of the Town of Waxaw. I live in Millbridge, so I'm one of y'all. But tonight, I'm here as the Assistant Governor of Rotary International District Seventy-six eighty and a member of the Waxaw-Wittington Rotary Club. Too often do we hear some of the negative stuff that's happening in our community, especially on Facebook around everything, right? But my job here tonight is to hope help raise some awareness, and more importantly, some of the good work that some of the growth in this community has come forth of, you know, increase in Rotary membership allows us to do a lot more cool things. And so this is on behalf of District Seventy-six eighty, Governor Deb Corbett. We're happy to announce the art competition, and this is district-wide. So not only is it going to be every high school student in the Town of Waxaw but Union County can also enter this, this prize. It's people that are homeschooled, that are in our Union County Public Schools, in our private schools, but any citizen or high school, excuse me, any high school student, whether they're a citizen of Union County. It's, it's a lot of different counties participating in it. And for those of you who don't know, Seventy-six eighty, we have over fifty-two clubs in the area. So it's a pretty broad opportunity. So that's why I wanted to see if we could raise as much awareness as we could, because I do believe we have a lot of talent in not only our Union County Public School System but of the citizens and Town of Waxaw. So I wanted to raise this. As you can see, I would direct your attention to the screen or in your handouts, you see the prizes. One of the things I do want to point out is not only has the competition started, but it runs through October thirty-first. So students have a ten, opportunity to submit their artwork, and on November ninth, the finalists will be chosen by panel of art professionals. So this is not someone within the Rotary District. This is where actually having professional artists that do professional art for, that are commissioned from Winston-Salem, Charlotte, so all the bigger surrounding areas. We're, we're trying to really make this a huge opportunity for our students. And more importantly, the grand prize and the surprises payout, and this can go towards a student's education. This also can go towards a, we believe in vocation as well. So if it's a vocation that they want to pursue, it'll be a cash prize. And more importantly, you see it pays through fourth place. The student will also, if they're homeschooled or publicly schooled, they'll have, the Rotary District is also going to contribute five hundred dollars either to the winning school's art department or to a art school of their choice. Maybe if a homeschool student pursued art at a private institution or a public institution, they would have the opportunity to donate that five hundred dollars there. So me personally, I would like to see the, the money and the winner stay within Union County. So that's why I'm here tonight. And I, this has been one of the cool projects that Rotary International can do. And like I said, this is something that I'm passionate about. And then also, on behalf of our over sixty-two members of the Waxaw-Wittington Rotary Club, they would also like to see this money stay locally with our, with our students here. So thank you for the opportunity, and I'll, I'll take questions if there is some.
Any questions from anybody around the board? I have one quick question. Do we know how many applicants there are so far to date?
No, they didn't give me that information. I think that's part of because it's completely done through that independent panel to try to make sure that there's no favoritism being played. So I think that's a awesome, that I don't know that answer.
That's awesome. All right. All right, appreciate that. Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
For presenting to us tonight. All right, we have one of our add-ons here. We got some updates on the state budget information and Town Manager Jeff Wells.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. So I want to make the public aware, as a board, I've already notified on the update to the state budget. And if you follow us regularly, you know that I've been giving updates and we're tracking the state budget. And the reason why we've been doing that is because we have opportunities through that for what are called state appropriations. And we did, I'm happy to say, receive in this budget document some state appropriations, and I will go over that as we move through this quick presentation. But first, the state budget was approved by both the House and the Senate at the end of last week. It was approved by the House on Thursday afternoon and then very early in the morning on Friday in the Senate. And so it typically happens in, the governor has three choices. The governor can sign the bill, and then it would go into effect immediately, or he can veto the bill, or then he can choose to let it go into law without his signature. And that third choice is what the governor did this time. So that requires a ten-day period after the budget is approved by both the House and the Senate. So it will become effective after that ten-day period expires, which I believe is sometime in the middle of next week. So the exciting part is, is that the town received four point seven five million dollars in investment for facilities, for equipment, and for infrastructure. So we are very excited and very proud, and I cannot just tell you how proud I am of everybody and their efforts working to, working for us, advocating for us, and partnering and working together to help provide these valuable resources to the town. So I'll go through each of them real quickly. The first one is a two million, seven hundred fifty-five, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar appropriation for parks and recreation. So it's specifically for a direct grant to the Town of Waxaw for capital improvements and equipment. And so what that will do is that will pay for the full acquisition cost as well as the startup cost for our new rec barn. The police department receives three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in equipment, and so that will directly cover the five-year Axon contract. So that is the contract that provides the body-worn cameras, batons, and tasers. So we are extremely excited about that. And thirdly, for schools, so you already see out there on Cuttersen Road, the crosswalk and beacon, we went ahead and put that up because we wanted to make sure that got up before school started. But we will get reimbursed for that cost for that because that was an important project for one of our legislators, specifically Representative Willis. And so we will get reimbursed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project. And then lastly, one point five million dollars for the downtown gray water project. So what that will do is that will get rid of our old septic tank systems that we have downtown, and we'll finally modernize that sewer system. And so I can't tell you how beneficial that's going to be to the downtown and the future of downtown as well. So all in all, that totals four million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in facility, equipment, and infrastructure for Waxaw for our future. And of course, there are a lot of people to thank in this process. First of all, Deborah Conrad with Conrad Capital, Inc. She's our lobbyist, just did an outstanding job working with all those other people that you, you see there on the screen, bringing us to Raleigh, eating with a lot of those same people that you see on the screen. So just incredible person to work with, and she has a lot of experience. She used to be a legislator herself, so she knows how the system works, and that's proven to be very, very valuable for us. I want to thank Senator Todd Johnson, Representative David Willis, Representative Mark Brody, Representative Dean Harp. Dean Harp is a very significant person in the state budget on an annual basis, as well as senior budget chairs, Representatives Sasser and Representatives Elmore. They were also imperative to some of the appropriations that we received. The Waxaw comms team. So what we, what we produced is this here, and everybody on staff and the board knows that, is a, is a book, a little booklet. We'll do this every year as part of the budget process, and it talks about us a little bit and what our specific needs are, categorizes them, has a description of them as well as what the estimated amount was. And we provided that to each of our legislative team members and of course to Deborah as well, and worked with each of them, and, and they found projects that were interest, uh, uh, by them to help fund. So that's just a So, that's just a great example of us all working together, producing something that they can easily read and follow and pick out things that they would have interest in. And of course, Waxaw staff, because while the comms team created this book, it's the needs of the staff communicating to us, so that all got put into this document so that we could do all that advocacy. And then last but not least, of course, none of this is possible without the support of the Board of Commissioners, who provide us that at every step and turn. So, I just want to say how much that we, as the staff, appreciate that support, and obviously, you see how that has come to fruition. So, thank you very much.
Wow, what a great effort all the way through. In fact, I got to give you guys all an applause for putting that together. Nothing like being educated, informed, and follow a process, and that's the way you get things done. So, appreciate everybody who did work on that. It was a big effort. Some of us went to Raleigh to do some of the presentations to the representatives and Senator Johnson. So, the effort paid off, and the relationships pay off. So, thank you for all that, all that you did.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. It's a good thing to hear. 4.7, I like this. All right, we don't have anything for public hearings tonight. We're going to go to old business. It's a second reading of a proposed ordinance establishing a social district for the Autumn Treasures event. Ms. Ashley, you're up.
Hi, guys. Okay, so we are going to talk again about the social district for Autumn Treasures. Do a quick reminder for you guys about the background. So, it's signed into law in September of 2021, with some updates in July of 2022. A social district is a designated area where someone can consume alcohol sold by an ABC permatee within that district. Areas can include indoor and outdoor areas connected to the district, private property, including ABC permities and not permities, any public streets, crosswalks, parking areas, all can be included. And the decision to participate is solely up to the business, and it does allow you now to bring alcohol from one business into another. So, you could take a drink from one of our bars into another bar if that bar allowed that. So, what we're proposing is to do one at Autumn Treasures. We tested our first one at the Downtown Plaza Grand Opening in August. This would be our second test. We would do it on Saturday, October 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then Sunday, October 15th, from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m. Those are during the festival hours of the event. We have our ABC permities here that are participating, and then we're working with all of our retailers as well to see who would allow alcohol to come in. We'll have signage placed at all of our exit points throughout the festival. And our cups will be 16-ounce plastic cups and wine glasses, and we'll provide those labels from the town. We do have a few plastic cups left over, so we'll provide the businesses with those, and then any extras they'll need, they'll provide. And we'll also have trash cans placed throughout the event and at the exit points of the district. And then we also will have a lot of security and traffic control on site. So, we'll have six or more officers, I think we're scheduling seven plus right now during the event. And we'll also have crossing guards located at major intersections. So, we're really focused on the safety during Autumn Treasures, as well as during the social district. We'll also have a website up where the maintenance plan and information will be hosted. We'll post that on social media, and it will also be accessible via QR code on all of our signage. You can see here our map of the district, so it reaches all the way from Emmetts, Greco, up to Tap House, and over to Dream Chaser. So, it includes all of our businesses that are in the downtown core, as well as the, as well as the festival boundaries. Last time, in our last meeting, we did talk a little bit about signage, so I wanted to show you guys the signage that we've got for the event. So, we've got four different signs that I'll show you guys. So, this right here will be located at each business. So, if there are businesses that do not want alcohol to come in, they'll put those on their front door. I mentioned sidewalk stamps last time, so these are removable stickers that we can put out on the sidewalk, and we'll put those at each exit point of the district, so where those little Xs are on that map. We will also have these signs located at eye level at each exit, so we've got, if you're looking down, as well as if you're looking up. That was one of the biggest feedbacks we got from the Downtown Plaza District. And then lastly, Pedro, you mentioned having signage in the festival grounds, which is such a good idea. So, we made signage for the festival grounds, too. So, these will be located on sandwich boards throughout the festival. We also make a map of all of the downtown businesses that are open during the festival, so we'll include the information on there as well. That way, there will be lots of information, QR codes on everything that will take you back to the website where you can find the information, too. So then, tonight is our second reading. After the event, we'll do a recap and measure success. In order to measure success, we'll look at the number of attendees and participants, as well as sales for our businesses downtown. We'll look at sales for the retailers, as well as our restaurants. We'll get that feedback from the businesses. How did it work with our staff? What could we do better if we did this in the future? We'll also survey our attendees. That survey will be available on that website that you can get to with a QR code. And then lastly, we'll take feedback from the police department, and that's how we'll determine if this is something we want to add into the future. So, are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? We've worked this one pretty thoroughly. I think that we're learning as we're tiptoeing, I guess, into this whole thing, so it worked out well before. I want us to thank all the board and commissioners to have their input and help Ashley do her job and get these things literally on the ground. And so, we're looking forward to a great event. So, I think Ms. Ashley, unless you guys have any questions, I think she's looking for some direction here, so we're looking for a motion.
Motion to adopt ORD 2023019, establishing the Autumn Treasure Social District.
All right, that motion is up. We've had some discussion, not at all in favor.
Aye.
All the way around. All right, thank you. Good luck on that. Looking forward to it happening. It's coming up soon.
Coming up soon.
So, it'll be a great thing to have. Thank you. All right, we'll drop down to new business. Need the approval of the installation of some speed cushions. So, Mr. James Kelly is our Traffic and Transportation Project Engineer. Welcome back.
Good evening. I'll try to keep it shorter this evening. So, just a quick update on the, some recommendations from town staff regarding some speed cushion installations on Coleroy Road, north of Soaring Eagle Lane. So, just to give you some background overview, Waxaw's traffic calming policy determines the eligibility for these traffic calming devices. It's a two-phase process. We'll get into that momentarily. And the speed cushions themselves are four-inch vertical deflections used to reduce vehicles' speed, and they have a cutout which allows those emergency vehicles to pass over without having to reduce speed. So, phase one of the process, we were notified via the property owner, via written request to the town to perform a traffic evaluation. A speed study was conducted on Coleroy Road, near Soaring Eagle Lane, over a 72-hour period. The analyzed locations, which are shown within your agenda packets this evening, met the criterion in accordance with the town's traffic calming policy. Moving into phase two, we sent petition documents to the property owner to obtain signatures of support. That is also within your agenda packet. The traffic calming petition met the minimum 70% of properties within the area signing in favor of the petition for the installation of the speed cushions. So, town staff reviewed these signatures for accuracy and confirmed that the minimum 70% support was achieved. In addition, we received a letter of support from the Kirtin HOA. So, next steps with that, town staff recommends the installation of two speed cushions along Coleroy Road, as identified within your agenda packets. Those locations being one speed cushion located approximately at mid-block on Coleroy Road, between Shasberry Park Drive and Soaring Eagle Lane, and one speed cushion located approximately at mid-block on Coleroy Road, between Soaring Eagle Lane and White Hawk Hill Road. Typical construction cost is estimated to be approximately $2,500 to $3,000 per speed cushion. That price is pending, and then upon Waxaw BOC authorization of expenditures, a contract for the speed cushion installation will be issued. So, with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions for our presenter? We've had some good participation in this. This is a good collaboration between some of the neighborhoods and us. So, again, it's kind of where your tax dollars go to, is to improve the safety. Commissioner?
Jim, as usual, we're planning on notifying the residents about the disruption when construction's set to start.
Correct. Per usual, we'll usually give them about a week's notice ahead of time in advance of any traffic control disruptions, and we will notify any surrounding residences of those interruptions.
I have not a question, but if there are other communities or HOAs that are, have a concern about a road within their development, how should they reach out? What's the process for them, maybe for us as a town, to consider this in their community?
So, really, anybody within town limits, including you all, can reach out to us to start the process. They do that by filling out a traffic calming form. So, they can either email me directly, or Linda, or really anybody with the town, just to reach out to us, and we can provide them with that form. Once they fill out that form, that starts the process.
Is there a, I guess, a segment in the Waxaw app to do that? I hope we added that to the Waxaw.
Yes, I believe there is also a section in there.
Second requested online. That's great. All right, any other thoughts, comments? All the way around. I think Mr. Kelly is looking for a motion for us.
I'll make a motion to approve the installation of speed cushions along Coleroy Road as presented.
All right, that motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous all the way around. Thank you for that. You're next up. Changes to an ordinance prohibiting parking on the east side of North Church.
That's correct. So, my second presentation tonight is for a first reading of an ordinance amendment. So, ordinance prohibiting parking on the east side of North Church Street. So, it's a proposed amendment to Section 66-23 of the Code of Ordinances. It would basically prohibit parking on the east side of North Church Street, between North Broom Street and C-16 and Bivens Street. This is where the foot doctor's located, all the way up to the vet clinic there as well. And it's just on the east side. The west side has parking currently, so that's going to remain. It's just the east side where we've noticed a lot of semi-trailers parking on that gravel lot there and blocking traffic at times. So, this would ultimately provide the Waxaw Police Department with a means to regulate parking on the east side of North Church Street. So, the requested action for tonight is just for feedback on the proposed ordinance prohibiting parking on the east side of North Church Street, between North Broom Street or NC-16 and Bivens Street. And any requested action will be implemented in the second reading and approval on October 10th.
All right, this is for property that's located on the east side, so the unimproved side of Church, which off the pavement's edge and a little bit more is actually private property, which the town leases and maintains. So, there's two issues there, but it again prevents that commercial truck traffic from parking semis and all that on there and get them off the streets, which we have ordinance anyway. So, I think that's a good start, because it does get a little crowded in there. The pavement is narrow on that section. So, one of the things we hope to see in the future is certainly a full improvement on that property, which will give us more ability to park. So, but for now, keep them off of there. All right, any other questions? Comments? Yes, sir?
Do you know why is our church禁止停车?
Really, it could be multiple reasons. One particular reason may just be overnight parking, which we have an ordinance to address there. It may just be storing the vehicle temporarily to address offloading and unloading of the vehicle. But nine times out of 10, what we've seen from the semi-trailers parked on North Church Street is that they remain idle there for several days on end.
They remain idling?
Correct. They remain parked there, yes.
Not idling. All right, appreciate that. All right, any other comments? All right, thank you, James. Appreciate that. All right, next up, we have a little bit of discussion, an appointment and reappointment of some of the Advisory Board Commission vacancies. So, we have our town clerk, Barbie Bruce. So, now you get to get in another chair or stand up over there.
Good evening. I'm before you to make the recommendations from the OAB regarding the appointments and reappointments of the Waxaw Advisory Candidates. This year, there were 14 regular seats and two midterm vacancies that were up for appointment. The OAB met on August 23rd. They received their packet of information with all the candidates' applications, and they were instructed to begin the interview process. They had two weeks to complete that. However, the Planning Board Vice Chair, who is the representative on the OAB, got ill and had laryngitis, so she was not able to complete those applications. So, we are recommending to bring those forward at the October 10th meeting. So, tonight, you have two options for your motion. You can make a motion to appoint and reappoint these applicants in one motion, or if you have a recommendation of your own and want to entertain individual motions, that sheet is available for you as well.
All right, so with that, I think we've gone through a lot of these candidates. Certainly, the OAB leadership has as well, unless you found any criminal activity in some of their backgrounds, I think we're going to look for a motion here, so it's up to you guys. Motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the slate of candidates for appointment/reappointment to the 2023 Waxaw Advisory Boards and Commissions. Do I have to stipulate to the delay of the one board, or is that good enough?
That's at a later date, I think.
Right. Okay, then...
Slate that's in the packet.
Slate that's in the packet.
All right, so that motion is up. Everybody clear on that? All right, very good. Motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous all the way around.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbie. That's a lot of work, and I'm actually very impressed on how many people have volunteered to start to fill these positions and become very active in our community. So, kudos to...
And we hope to get more.
And we hope to get more. That's exactly right. There's a lot of people here. All right, so we got to add to this one. We'll call it J4 Advisory Boards. I'll have to take that back as temporary easement. And so, we have Town Engineer, Assistant Town Manager. Where'd he go to? Back there, there he is. Matt Hubert. So, we'll talk about a little collaborative cooperative effort here, right?
Exactly. Good evening. So, this came up just last week, and we were able to get it on the agenda in the nick of time. Basically, it entails a little bit of real estate negotiation to help our local business move forward. So, the background here is the New Great Wagon Road Distillery and the Waxaw's Duncan McDonald House currently share the septic system and behind the McDonald House, one town property, and then this is the Great Wagon Road Distillery. So, they've done improvements and really done well, making that building a really outstanding bit of architecture added to our already really awesome downtown. One of the things that they had an issue with is they don't have enough space behind their building, on their lot, because there's gas main services, the existing septic power coming through there, just, it's a litany of things in the ground already, and so they did not have room to put the pump for their new septic system. And they've reached out, because we're a neighbor right behind them, we're already sharing the tank, to see if we could assist and find a place for it, and we've been able to do that. So, basically, this is really only a temporary request, because Union County Water is already designing an improvement to replace the septic or graywater system serving downtown. They got money from the state this, in this budget cycle, to help speed that along. So, that design is underway, and construction is expected within the year. So, again, the ask is to provide a 10-foot by 15-foot easement, temporary until the time that the improvements can be made long-term, and we pull the tanks out and go online with a gravity system for the permanent solution. When that occurs, that this temporary easement would then be nullified in the area, revert back to full use for the town. The plat exhibits... The plat exhibit is here. Basically, here is the distillery's property, the town property comes in, and we're just providing carving out a 10-foot by 15-foot, so they have enough area, one, put it in, and then two, maintain it if for any reason they have to go in and do any maintenance. They've got enough space and the right to access it. So again, staff is recommending a motion to provide a temporary utility easement of 10-foot by 15-feet on parcel number 05113032B, the Dunkin' McDonald parcel, for installation and maintenance of the septic system to J&amp;G Waxall LLC. I believe the proprietor is here, if you have any questions. Holly's in the back, but other than that, you have any questions for me?
Could you revert back to the blueprint?
Okay, so as I'm looking at it down here, it looks like we already have that septic tank sitting in there, so septic tank A, it's already there. We have a five-foot utility easement in there anyway, so really, we're just moving things around. I can't wait till we can get rid of that gray water system. That whole downtown is a bunch of surprises every time we stick a spade in the ground.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I think it'd be a great, great temporary fix, you know, for that, to do that. We certainly want to be as cooperative and appreciative of the businesses that are here. I don't even want to know how all this mess happened in there, because it really doesn't matter with what I'm looking at on the map, there's everything in the ground there. So I'm sure we'll open this up one more time, and we'll find something else, but yeah, I just wanted to see all those easements in there. Any questions? Jason?
I was just gonna, gonna agree, as we've seen before, I mean, the town's 100 and almost 35 years old. When we start digging, you never really know what you're gonna find in the ground, so.
Absolutely.
I see this as a temporary easement, and it'll all be sorted out when the gray water project gets sorted out, so from my opinion, I don't have an issue.
Right, and part of that gray water improvement is the allocation that we got, the allotment that we got just recently, a million and a half, I think, is the number on that?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so that should take care of that. So, all right, any other questions? All right, so I think Mr. Matt's gonna look for a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion to provide a temporary utility easement of 10-feet by 15-feet on parcel number 05113032B, for installation and maintenance of the septic system to J&amp;G Waxall LLC.
Very good. All right, that motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous again. Thanks, and thanks for working that out. And Holly, thank you for being here as well.
We are too.
So, that's great. All right, there's nothing up for closed session tonight, so I'm gonna drop down to the town leadership reports. Town manager Jeff Wells.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. We today got our official population estimate from the state demographers office. As I mentioned, about a month, month and a half ago, we had gotten the estimate, which was 22,570. So the official demographers number is 22,569. So someone.
They missed.
Disappeared. So, but that is what the official number is, and as I've mentioned before, that number's important, because that's the number that they use for distributions, sales tax, franchise tax, and other things like that. So that's why that number is important. Of course, it's gone up from the previous year. They are a year behind, so this is a population estimate that is actually for July of 2022. Town campus update, if you've driven by there, you've seen a lot of things going on. So the electrical and mechanical roughens have started on town hall, the upper slab, the second floor is in place. Most of the structural beams are set, with the exception of the upper roof joists, and the first coat of the air barrier is in progress. If you've noticed, you probably see that there's about the bottom, two-thirds of the building is a different color than the top right now. It's because they put that coat to make sure that air doesn't go through the CMU there. And so they'll continue that process with the second coat, and then continue that moving, moving forward as well. And you've probably seen in the back, the steel beams are in place for the Public Services and Parks and Recreation Operations Center, so that is in progress as well. Excited to see that building start to go up, and the water line installation is in progress too. So that's just a quick update of the hot points of what's going on out there, and that's all I have this evening.
All right, that's pretty simple. It's looking good out there, so. Been out the site a lot of times, so excited to have that completed. All right, next up, Chief Dex, you're up.
All right, so we've had a pretty busy month for August and September. Speaking of town campus, as well as the downtown park, we've upped up, we've upped all of our extra patrols on both of those. I know with town campus now, that copper and everything else is coming in, you know, that's when people like to come, so we'll be keeping a very big eye on that. Deputy Chief Cohen and I have been attending Crime Stoppers, which is very good. I don't know if, so Crime Stoppers in Union County contributes a lot. A, if we need equipment that's gonna prevent crime, it's gonna help us out, they're willing to foot the bill for that, as well as any tips that come in, you know, they'll provide funding for that. Our narcotics unit has made numerous seizures over the last month. They continue to work with HSI, Homeland Security Investigations, as well as local here, so I know they've, they've got a lot going on. Cuthbertson and Lawson Crosswalk, the big one, right? So we're continuing extra patrol that. We're back on mornings and afternoons to try to check that, to make sure that people are stopping at that crosswalk, and it is effective. I know this morning, we had 10 children, as well as two runners, that crossed between 7:30 and 8:30 this morning. No problems there, so, but we're gonna continue to do that for another week or two, just to make sure everybody's on point. Autumn treasures, so we do have six-plus officers, nine to be exact, that'll be at Autumn Treasures. So biggest event of the year, I think we need the biggest manpower for police at that event with that many people down there, so we'll be in full force there. Speeding complaints in Millbridge, we've, we've gotten a couple of speeding complaints in there, so we're addressing those, patrols, doing extra patrols there, as well as radar enforcement in, in Millbridge as well. The part-time community officer is working out very well. I really believe, I've, I've heard from numerous citizens, as well as the downtown businesses, they really love it, and we love to hear from them, so. Been a great month.
It is a great month, a great busy month. Interactive. Jason?
Yeah, I just had a question for you, chief. So within the speeding, the Millbridge that you said you're, you're currently monitoring, are there particular streets that, in Millbridge, that require more of your attention? And do you think that maybe it warrants investigating this speed hump process?
So interested enough, Coleroy is one of those roads, you know, where the speed humps are going in, so you're absolutely right. And when we get those complaints, we always advise them, if they can get 70% of the people to sign a petition, that they can look at, you know, the speed hump option. A lot of them don't like that option, you know, they'd rather keep a smooth road, but like we explained to them when they called them the complaints, these people speeding through the neighborhood normally aren't visitors, they're people who live in the neighborhood. So when we pull, like, there was one pulled over the other day that advised they were one of the people complaining. I, I found that very interesting, that they complained about the speeding, but they were the speeder, so, you know, it takes all kinds.
Happens.
I, I can help out a little bit with that question too, Jason. If you recall, we recently approved two speed cushions on Millbridge Parkway, and so that's definitely one of the heavy spots for complaints, but another one is also Hudson Mill Road again. We put two speed cushions on the hill, but down there at the bottom. I know, because I walk by that area, and you recall the Shepherds, the family who was big in that process, and I see and talk to them all the time, and she told me, it's like, hey, we got another speed request coming, and I understand through James that the, that the study was just complete, and it did meet warrants, and so now it's up to the residents there to get the signatures to go through the process. So those are the, those are the two streets I, I would, I would think are the, the most recognized by folks. I'm sure there probably are others, but those are the two main arteries in and out of, of Millbridge.
I think it's a, it's a good thing. I mean, you're either going to pay attention to the speed limits in there, or you're gonna get what you didn't want, so.
Can I just ask one question? Jeff, we talked about the speed limit on Cuthbertson the other day. Can you just address the issue with that?
Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're working as diligently as we can to try to get some traction there. I will say that, you know, the DOT has been resistant to that for quite a long time, but we will continue to work as much as we can, just provide, help the DOT through a process with data. We're monitoring accidents, things like that, that happen. In fact, chief just provided me the most recent ones that we can provide to the DOT as well, so we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep doing what we can to try to get them to recognize that, that speed limit, which I wholeheartedly believe should be reduced to 35 miles per hour.
All right, any other thoughts, questions, comments are on the table. Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have Lisa in tonight, or?
Madison.
Madison in tonight, the pitch hitter.
Forgot the pitch hitter.
No problem.
Yes, your even better choice for planning and zoning tonight. So just some general updates in the world of planning and zoning. We've had a lot of interest in our developer project page, so we have added that to the homepage of the waxall.com website for ease of access. Last week, we had our September planning board meeting, where they heard the Adelina project. Planning board voted to table it, and it will come back October 17th to them to make a recommendation. So you're looking at a first meeting in November, public hearing for the Adelina project. We have received a submittal for the Prescott Village commercial site, behind the Arby's and beside the Bed and Bark. It's a 16,000-square-foot development for retail, commercial office, so seeing a little more activity on that site. The Preserve at Forest Creek, we have an update. So if you remember, this project was approved in August of 2020. Lennar originally backed out of that project, and Pulte has picked it back up, and so they have begun site work for Phase One, and they are working on the final construction documents for Phase Two. And then finally, our comp plan draft, we're looking to get that on the website this week for additional feedback, and that is all from us. Any questions?
Let me see.
I remember that the cut-through road in Prescott Village was supposed to start when Phase Two began in Prescott Village. Are we now at Phase Two, and are they supposed to start that roadwork?
Yeah, so this is one of the last remaining parcels for Phase One, so they're continuing to work on the Phase Two aspect of it. I imagine we'll be seeing something on that relatively soon, but yeah, this was the last, the last remaining parcel for Phase One, yep. Originally was supposed to be at Anytime Fitness, I think the sign sat there for quite some time, but we're seeing general activity on this parcel now.
I have a real-time update on that, too. I know that Lisa and Matt and some other of his engineering staff met with the developer this afternoon to go over the, the traffic impact analysis results and review their process moving forward, so that is moving forward.
And when you mentioned that cut-through, that cut-through, if I think what you're talking about, that, you know, will not go through where it was originally intended. It's part of the, we call it now the affection S-curve, or the traffic circle that's gonna be down at the bridge there.
I was talking about the one that's on Pine Oak, where you cut in. Are we not doing that?
That's still gonna happen.
Yeah, that's the one I was talking about.
Right. Just wanted to be clear that it wasn't going to be extended into that neighborhood, it's gonna go around it.
Right, that's correct.
All right, great. All right, any, since he's the best guy here today, so you wanna grill him a little bit more, give him some work, all right? Nothing else. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
All right, board of commissioners, any thoughts and comments about all the things that we're getting able to do? So got a lot of activity going around town. Otherwise, you guys look like you all want to go home tonight, so I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn. Oh, don't just jump up, I mean.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.